I really appreciate each of these candidates who is so brave and generous with their time to be willing to represent us, the citizens of Carlsbad. And we appreciate that you're here, listening to us, people who largely live around here, around the Point Setia Park area. Well, go ahead, and maybe each one of you can introduce yourself, make a short statement, and then if there's questions, make some questions. Okay, do you want to start? Move down.
Sure. Can everybody hear me? Excellent, I'm using my theater voice. My name is Cory Schumacher, and I am a nonprofit executive director. It's called the Inspire Initiative. I founded it here in Carlsbad. And we use surfing as a tool to empower women and girls in our community to be leaders. And the reason I chose surfing is because I am a three-time Women's World Longboard Surfing Champion. So, I've spent a lot of time in the water, I've spent a lot of time here in Carlsbad and surrounding North County. Twenty-eight years in North County and 11 years here in Carlsbad, in the Village. And I guess the first thing that I should tell you is that I spent the entire day here in Point Setia Park and really got a feel for how the users here enjoy the park, and the fact that not everybody who comes here is from the neighborhoods around here. There's a lot of folks who come from down south, there's a lot of folks who actually come from different areas. And I felt the specialness of the park, so I'm glad to have done that today. A year ago, I walked into city council and I watched an important vote being taken away from the city of Carlsbad. And that vote was for the lagoon, the mall, the Strawberry Mall, turned into Measure A. And regardless of how you voted on that, I think the fact that we had a 64% voter turnout, which is the highest turnout in San Diego County history, shows that the people of Carlsbad really did want to have a voice in that decision moving forward. So, I was one of those who fought very hard to get us that vote, and at the end of that journey, the community asked me to run for city council. A large part of that reason had to do with the fact that I listen to residents. I listen and also believe that residents know what's in their own best interest. And all the development and all of the projects that we have coming down the pike, the increased traffic, and all of the impacts that we have to deal with as residents, we deserve to have a meaningful input in those decisions moving forward. And I don't think that I have to tell you that the city council is not great at listening. They put the onus on you when they don't know how to communicate properly with folks who use parks, with folks who live in different neighborhoods, so that when you have finally something that gets put up right here on the bowl, that shows you exactly where the Dog Park is going to be, one week before the decision to move forward on that, and then accuse you, and believe me, it's been done consistently, of not weighing in on the project for the last two to three years, for me, that feels like a slap in the face. If you truly knew how Point Setia Park's users used the park, that should have gone up three years ago. That's how you reach out to community members, according to how you use the spaces that you use. So, a little bit about what I'd like to do moving forward, of course, the fundamental foundation of my platform is based around this idea of finding what each neighborhood and each community needs as far as communication, in order to more meaningfully engage the community and our neighborhoods with decisions that will impact us moving forward. Community planning partnerships, websites that are set up that can make it easy for you to see the timeline of how things are progressing, for particular projects that are important for your neighborhoods. Transparency in government is, of course, an extremely important part of that, and by transparency, I simply mean really making it a focus, what you need to see and what will impact decisions moving forward, not simply kind of putting them up on a website, which is what Carlsbad does now, putting it up on a website, and then if you happen to find it, because you know how to do a keyword search, then you run into memos that might lead you in another, it's a rabbit hole, right? And that's typically the way that us, as researchers, have been doing a lot of this stuff, trying to get information moving forward. I'd like to streamline that and make it a lot more accessible. And then third, because I don't want to simply be an oppositional candidate, I think that Carlsbad deserves to have a vision for moving us into the 21st century, keeping us prosperous economically moving forward, and filling those open office spaces that so many of us see on Faraday and Palomario Port Road. And that's why I would like to draw in and create a rich culture for clean and green tech here in Carlsbad. We're graduating more folks from UCSD than Stanford and Berkeley combined, and those students can't find jobs here in San Diego County. They're leaving and getting recruited out to places like Denver, Colorado. It's a business industry that is set to, it is already having a great impact economically, $400 billion alone in this last year for the United States, and it's set to continue that trajectory. And since a lot of folks in San Diego County and the region are moving toward climate action plans that have 20, by 2035 are going to hit a goal of 100% renewable energy, we know that we're going to need these types of industries here. And Carlsbad, I think, is uniquely situated to really draw in, retain, and grow those businesses. So, I will be here for questions. I really appreciate the work that Amy Livingston has put in to really... (applause) And also Stacy King, to really just let folks... These are really, really good examples of how, in a vacuum, the community gets together and informs itself and continues to build and organize. And there's a really rich culture of volunteerism and community organization here in Carlsbad, and that's something that I'd love to continue to tap moving forward, so that we can shape a future for Carlsbad that we can all be proud of. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) My name is Bill Fowler. I have been a resident of Carlsbad for 25 of the last 30 years. As my current resident, I've lived about 11 years or 12 years or so. So, my first experience in Carlsbad actually was working on Aviara at the time, this was in the mid-'80s, at the time it was called Pacific Rim. It was owned by the Hunt Brothers from Texas, the oil scions of the original Herbert Hunt. And they had bought Pataquitas Lagoon and the surrounding area, and I was a consultant for them, working on entitlements for that. At that time, Carlsbad was first developing the growth management plan, and I will tell you that that city council that included people like Bud Lewis and others, and some of whom were actually active more recently in the Measure A, really held our feet to the fire. I mean, we'd come in, literally come in on a Monday and say, "What does the city have in store for us there?" They fought us on everything to make sure that we paid for all the infrastructure that was put in there, that the lagoon itself would be dredged on a timely basis. I mean, they were absolutely and totally active in the development process to what became Aviara. And it was so shocking to me that this current city council decided to make a secret and secret conspiracy to develop a mega mall on the shores of Aguahetiana Lagoon. It just was incredible to me, the difference in attitudes towards the community in both of those different projects, and that really did inspire me to run for Carlsbad City Council. And I was also active in the Let the People Vote movement. I was a signature collector, volunteer, and I was really influenced by the depth of feeling in the community that that was simply wrong. I think that we all, and then I was also active in canvassing for the no-on-a vote as such as well. So, I think that the way this plays out for me is that, you know, we all love Carlsbad. We're here because we love Carlsbad, and so that's, you know, very easy to determine. And I think there's a lot of great things about Carlsbad as well, but I think that what really stops Carlsbad from being a world-class city is the city council. And we need a city council with more transparency, and I, by trade, am a consultant. I listen to people who employ me, and if I'm elected, I will listen to you, who employ me. I know how to listen, and I will listen. And so, that's a very, very important part. I also have a vision of a city that is self-aware of its carbon footprint, that it take more aggressive action than it has been in doing some really good things, like Aqua Norte Park, where much of the electricity is provided by solar. And I think that is a very, very obvious way that the city itself can make itself more accountable and make itself more conscious of its carbon footprint, and I think that's a very, very important idea. And I think solar is great for that, because everybody knows what solar is, many of you probably have solar in their house, and it's not much of a mystery. I'm also for enabling Carlsbad citizens to look at their own carbon footprint and reduce their own carbon footprint, including having community choice energy that would allow you to choose your energy provider, some of whom would provide renewable energy sources. Now, that's a little bit more complicated thing, it's not low-hanging fruit like solar, but I do support it, and I think that that is the one thing that Carlsbad can do to enable you to make some great choices about electricity and your carbon footprint. And there are other things as well that Carlsbad can do to enable you to be conscious of the environment, including zero waste and things like that. So, those are my two primary concerns, those are two of my primary concerns. The third concern is something that I didn't quite fully understand until I met with the police, the fire people, the firemen, paramedics, and the Carlsbad employees themselves. I discovered from talking to the police union representatives that the police department is understaffed, it's understaffed by as many as 15 people, that that is made up by overtime and things like that, that are probably not in the best interest, in my opinion, of Carlsbad, and by the way, not in the best interest of the opinion of the unions either. So, I think we need to address a couple of issues that flow out of that, because this is another story that I heard from Carlsbad employees. Carlsbad police officers need to recruit locally, because it solves a lot of problems of context. So, it's easier to recruit somebody from Escondido, and they know what the area is, they know where the streets are, and all that kind of thing, but now we're reduced to recruiting police officers from Ohio, literally from Cleveland, Ohio. And so, there's a lot of ramping up to do and all of that. And it seems clear that the compensation for our police department, our police, is probably below par and below the standards or what's typically found in Southern California and San Diego County. So, we need to address that. We want the best, we have great police officers, of course, but we also want to provide a compensation structure that will help us get the top-notch police officers, and we should do that. And in talking with the Carlsbad employees, they are concerned with outsourcing, and I totally agree with them. We want employees to be employees of Carlsbad and not employees of some company in Chicago, of at least a PowerPoint presentation of the study through a records request to the city. And it turns out that morale in Carlsbad, Carlsbad employees, is very, very low, and much lower than cities in Southern California. And we have to ask ourselves, why is that? And one of the things that the PowerPoint pointed out was that there's very, very low confidence in the management structure within Carlsbad, leading to the very, very top, including the city council itself. They have told me that they feel that the city council is not responsive to their needs, and this gets back to a narrative that I've introduced and been talking about from the beginning, and that is the city council as a bully. And interestingly enough, when I had my conversation with the police officials and the policemen, they went to my website and saw my narrative about the bullying by the city council, and he said, "You're absolutely right, they do bully us." And when I met with the city employees, the first thing they said to me was, "Yes, you're absolutely right, they bully us." So, that's got to stop. We want employees to love Carlsbad as much as we do. Now, most city employees can't afford to live in Carlsbad, and that's an issue. It's not an issue that we could solve by just raising everybody's, you know, income and things like that, but we can by treating them with respect and giving them the compensation that they deserve. And so, that would be a number-one priority if I were to be elected. So, I am interested in transparency, I'm interested in our, meaning Carlsbad city, carbon footprint, I'm interested in the morale of people who serve us, because they are a large part of what makes Carlsbad a great city. I hope you vote for me in the week after next. Thank you. (applause)
So, I hope, I hope you can hear me in the back. Can you hear me back there? Yeah, closer, right? If you can't hear me, just raise your hand. So, my name is Ann Tanner. I'm a 15-year resident of Carlsbad. I was the former president and board member of the Carlsbad Unified School District. And during that time, we had some, I think, major successes, one being that we built Sage Creek High School, and we built it under budget and we built it on time. During that time, we worked with $100 million budgets, as well as we saw as a board, that there were only 52% of the graduating seniors in Carlsbad that were eligible for California State University or the University of California. And as a board, we thought, "This is unacceptable, we need to look at this." We changed the requirements for graduation from Carlsbad Unified School District. We went from 52% of those being eligible to go to college, CSU, San Marcos, or the University of California, to now it's 75%. That's a huge bump. That doesn't mean everybody has to go to college. What it means is that they decide to go into the Marine Corps, start a small business, they have the requirements, that if they ever want to go back and take an accounting course or a tech course, they have those requirements. So, I'm quite proud of those two things when we were on the school board. By profession, I am a licensed clinical social worker, so I'm a first responder for the Red Cross. That means whenever there's a mass casualty, whenever there's a natural disaster, I'm one of the first responders. And what I do is I go out and basically do psychological first aid. So, for the last 12 years, since 2004, I've been working as a first responder for the Red Cross. I did my undergraduate work at Stanford University, I did my graduate work at Columbia University in New York City. And so, I go out, well, first of all, I want to say something, because these four, these three people behind me, I am so impressed with them. We have been doing campaign forums, we've been doing debates, and all of them have wonderful ideas and they're fabulous people. Where are the incumbents today? We had a forum on Thursday, where were they? They weren't there. And that's one of the reasons I'm running, and some of Mr. Fowler and Ms. Schumacher have already mentioned that. Are they listening to you? So, I go from door to door and I say, "My spiel, I want to preserve the quality of life that characterizes Carlsbad, and I want to preserve key open spaces." And then I say, "We want to be fiscally conservative, we want to make sure your dollars that you pay as taxpayers are a serious stewardship that all of us have." And then I say, "No more meetings behind closed doors." And no one, whether you're Democrat, whether you're independent, whether you're Republican, they go, "That's it, that's what's been happening." And so, I want to bring some trust back to the city. What does that look like? All public information, public business, has to be done in public. That's an old statute in California called the Brown Act. You need to know what's going on. You don't need to, all of a sudden, a sign to go up and say, "This is what's going to happen." What else can you do? You can actually take steps to bring back trust. Another one, which I've talked to some of you before. When you're on the city council, you do your homework. You come down and you look at this spot, you talk to the residents. So, when you vote yea or nay, you can explain, "This is why I voted yea, this is why I voted nay, because I've done my homework." So, that needs to be done. Good governance should never be sacrificed for personal gain. When we saw what was happening with Measure A, a lot of us had question marks about that. Is there some personal gain happening? I'm not sure, but the perception was such. When you're on a board, and when I was on the school board, you have a set amount of revenue, and you got to make decisions. Are we going to build a new city hall? Or are we going to take care of parking over here? Are we going to take care of street maintenance? Are we going to keep subsidizing the golf course? Or are we going to make sure that different neighborhoods feel safe? I talked to a particular neighborhood that went before the city hall and said, "We don't feel safe in our neighborhood, we never feel like there's a police presence." And I said, and this was after a city council meeting, and I said, "Well, how long has that been going on?" And they said, "15 years." 15 years, you've been coming to the city council 15 years. So, people need to listen. So, those are the things that have to be done, we have to restore trust. In my profession, I got to listen. And the only know, you only know if something's going to change by watching behavior. If you watch the behavior of the city council, you got to wonder, are changes happening? Are they trustworthy? I'm going to, I'm going to really finish with one other thing, and I've talked to some of you even in the last 20, 25 minutes. If you drive an 18-wheeler, and you've been driving that 18-wheeler for 20 years, you're pretty good at driving, you stay within the lines, you haven't had an accident, but you forget where the blind spots are on that 18-wheeler. You need someone to come in and say, "Do you remember that far wheel? There's a blind spot there." You need to know about that before there's a major accident. I want to be those independent eyes that say, "You guys, there are blind spots, and we need new eyes to see those blind spots, so that we aren't going down a road to a major accident." I'm really appreciative, really appreciative of the citizens I've talked to. I found out, like Ms. Schumacher said, when you talk to the citizens, you get great ideas. Why wouldn't you talk to them? Why wouldn't you have them part of the solution? Carlsbad residents, they are generous, they are smart, and they want to be part of the solution. If I'm elected to the city council, that will be my mantra. To include that, to return trust and accountability, to be fiscally conservative, and to hear what you have to say. Thank you very much. (applause)
Hello, everyone. My name's Brandon Rowley, I'm 23 years old, and I'll just give you a couple of reasons that I was interested in running for city council. The first was, so I, right now, I'm a zookeeper at the San Diego Zoo, I work in the entomology department. My job right now consists of working with a tiny little butterfly, about the size of a quarter, called the keynote checker spot butterfly. It's a native San Diego, used to range from Santa Barbara down to Mexico, but has since almost exclusively been reduced all the way to Riverside County, and that's all, that's pretty much the only place it can be found now. So, my job is repopulating it, and we're trying to kick-start the San Diego population back into recovery. So, I'm working on the long-term conservation and recovery of that butterfly. I've also worked as an environmental consultant on Camp Pendleton, working on conservation projects for the Lee Spelzviro and California Natcatcher. And so, my background is, I have a degree from Cal Poly in biology, and so, I took my experience there and dedicated my career to conservation and science. And so, one of my initial motivating factors to run for city council was, I've noticed at the federal, state, and even local level, that this trend is true, and there's a very unfortunate gap between science and politics. The general demographics are overwhelmingly, on federal, state, and local level, that our politicians are, have backgrounds in businesses and law. And while that's undoubtedly important, I think there's a distinct lack of conservation mindsets in politics. And so, especially in a beach town like Carlsbad, we bring in over 3 million visitors every year, they spend a lot of money, and a lot of the reason that they come to Carlsbad is because we have really pristine beaches, we live in a biodiversity hotspot, we have a lot of amazing and varied habitat and wildlife, I think it's very important to preserve that. And so, I would like to be able to bridge the gap between science and politics. I think if there's more scientists in politics, then we'll be able to show everyone that something that's easy to grasp and it's something that's very important to our, especially a community like Carlsbad. So, Measure A was something that also got me very interested. I kind of woke up one day and very unfortunately realized that I didn't know who the mayor was, or anyone on the city council. And so, I was disappointed in myself, because I had taken a lot of political activism on the central coast in Cal Poly when I was going to college, and I realized I didn't really get involved in my local community. So, if I believe, like a lot of politicians do, that the kids are the future and that we're supposed to take on the mantle of our communities and the future of politics, then we need to be involved. And so, I think I have a unique perspective from my age, and being able to draw in more kids into the political process, and show them that if I can do it, then they can get involved as well. And so, Measure A was something, one of the first things that came up that I really got, that I really became aware of, and something that inspired me to get involved. And it was also very inspiring to see the community come out and support it, or just to get involved in the petitions that were signed and the canvassing. So, that was really the first thing that I was aware of and inspired me to jump into the race. I figured there was no better way of learning as much as I could than to just dive into the city council race, and that has been absolutely true, I've learned a lot in a very short amount of time. Thanks to these three as well, they've been a great help, it's been really fun to run with them. And it's an interesting dynamic, as we have all said, because us four challengers seem to generally align on similar issues, whereas the incumbents, we kind of butt heads with them, and we've been working very closely to come to as many of these events as possible and meet as many people as possible. So, that's why I'm here, I just want to get my name out there and learn about the issues and talk to as many people as possible, and really inspire people to get involved and take action in their community. As we have all said, we're all very passionate about transparency as well. The Measure A thing was very confusing to me and politics in general. I kind of have this idea of going in and just blowing the lid off of all the closed-door meetings, I really don't understand why any of the information on the city council shouldn't have been available to anyone else in the community, that's something I feel very strongly about. So, transparency absolutely is part of my platform, sustainability, following through with the legacy of Measure A, and continuing to protect our open space. And public safety as well, Mr. Fowler mentioned that it's very important that our first responders and paramedics and firefighters and police officers are fully staffed and fully funded. I know there's been an issue lately about lack of lifeguards on our beaches, and so, that's something also I'm very interested in. So, those are kind of the core dynamics of my platform, and then bringing youth into politics and bridging the gap between local officials and science and conservation. So, that's what I offer to the city council, and I hope to mingle around with more of you as we go along. So, thanks, everyone, for coming, and thank you again to Amy for listening.
Thank you, thank you all very much. I just wanted to remind you that you vote, is it November 8?
November 8.
Tuesday after next. There are five seats on the Carlsbad City Council, two of them are up for grabs, up for reelection, so there are six candidates. Two of them are the incumbents who are not here, although they were invited to be here. And these four candidates are the other, that makes up the six, so these four plus the two incumbents. And you can vote for two when you vote on November 8. So, thank you for listening, thank you for coming, and if anyone has questions, is that okay if you open up for questions? Go ahead, if you have any questions.
Since we know that either zero or two of you will be elected, because we have the two incumbents, and we need... and we need all four of you, are the four of you willing to work with whatever council we end up with for the next at least two years?
So I think we're all asked that question quite a bit, because even one or two of us will, I hope, two of us will be on the council. This is what you can do. From my experience working on other boards, you have to get two other votes. So you have to be able to work with the other council members. But you could also shed light. You know, you can take a light and say, "If you've done your homework." You can say, "This is a situation, we may not agree, but I wanna at least make sure that the citizens know what the information is." So you can shine a light and try and get those two other votes. And it can be done, it can be done. Especially if you can persuade them with facts. Persuade them with facts. And present that to the community, you've got your facts down. That can be very, very persuasive. And I think that can be done.
So I'll just say too that I think especially given the whole feeling of Measure A, right? So if any of us two are elected to the city council, and again, I hope two of us are, me personally, I'm interested in, if I'm not elected, joining one of the commissions. The Commission for Beach Preservation is something I'm very interested in. Actually, and assuming there's no vacancy there, I'd really go on anything that is open. I think that's another really important way to get involved and keep up to date with the city council. But going back to Measure A, I think that what you can be sure of with any four of us is the issue of transparency. And as Anne just said, if you bring these facts to light and open them up to the public and tell everyone what's going on, then oftentimes it will sway the opinion of the other two city council members who might be interested in not taking as much heat as they have been because they've been having these closed-door meetings. So I think especially, and I bring up Measure A because had that not come to light and had folks not done the canvassing and the petitioning to get that out to a vote, then a lot of Carlsbad might not have even realized it was an issue and it would have just passed.
We had bulldozers up there.
Right, exactly, yeah, and then they wouldn't have been able to do anything about it. But if there's two folks on the city council that, you know, the other city council members are trying to convince them to have a closed-door meeting, and any of us two say, "We're not gonna play that game," and just give it out to the public and say, "This is what's going on in this meeting, and we wanna bring it to your awareness." And then there's an uproar, and if it turns out everyone really cares about it, I think that's absolutely the best way to have the other two council members at least be able to open up the discussion, even if they don't agree with the rest of Carlsbad. But if Carlsbad disagrees with them, then they should absolutely adopt those policies. So anyway, my point is that, should I not be elected, I'd absolutely be willing to work with any of these four. And moving forward, definitely keep being involved through a commission.
So I heard that question in two different ways, so I'll answer both of the ways I've heard it. So, to address the issue that always comes up with, "Hey, what if you're the only one on a, you know, five-member council, and you're the outsider? How will you deal with that?" It's a very important question. I don't know how many times I've come into a client situation in which I have been touted as, well, I won't say touted as Jesus Christ, but very near to it, that I was gonna solve everybody's problem. And I guarantee you, if you want to invoke suspicion and anxiety and anger at somebody, you tell them you're gonna solve every problem that they have. So I've come with a lot of experience in dealing with people who are going to resist what I have to bring to the table. Of course, nobody can solve every problem anybody has. And it's arguable that nobody can solve a single problem completely that everybody has. And so I think everybody needs to be within themselves and what they can accomplish. I seek a consensus, I'm a consensus builder. I work with people all the time who don't agree with what I have to offer. But we always work out at the end an accommodation of all the different views. So I think I can handle that situation of being a single person on the council of other members who really come from the same background and have, and believe in an ethic that they have to be totally in agreement, and which I do not agree. And my experience is that life actually is better when you actually have some limited amount of disagreement. As long as there's a consensus that you are all pulling together to a common goal. And I think they do have that, I think that's not their problem. So now I wanna switch over and address what happens next if I don't get elected. So what's the great thing about Measure A is that it was a watershed event, and it's never gonna be the same. And even if we get one person elected, even if both incumbents get returned, and I think that's a possibility, that they will never be able to do what they did with Measure A. People right now are focused on that. And the more that they try to do things without transparency, as we see here, the more the community realizes, "Hey, wait a second, we can do something about this" and make them very uncomfortable. So I think that what happens to me after the election, you know, I'll be active in politics, I've become a political junkie, I've become a community-involved person. And yes, so I will be a person who will be at the city council as I have been in the last two years, being active against things like the gun range and the puppy mill thing and things like that. So I think it's gonna be a different environment. And I think it's an exciting environment, even if I lose. I think this is an exciting time for Carlsbad. And even under that scenario, I really look forward to being active in the community and working for all of us.
Measure A did absolutely change the landscape here. And it's interesting when people ask this question, we do get asked this a lot. "How will you be one person, or how will you get that other vote, or how will you get consensus?" What I can tell you, after the thousands of conversations that I've had and all the different projects that I've actively worked with the community to push back in order to have community involvement, like the Village in the Barrio Master Plan, like the South Ponto Projects, also like the Bresi Ranch, the Uptown Bresi Ranch project, and this. The reason that the city council currently is being more receptive is because they know that the community is paying attention. One of us gets elected, two of us gets elected, they know that those people are going to have the voice and the trust of the community. Which means that we don't simply represent one, we don't simply represent two. We represent the will of the people. That has developers calling me personally, trying to ask me to sit down because they wanna make sure that their developments get through. And that has quite a few other people calling me personally to try to make sure that they get their way. I don't return those phone calls, by the way. I send the money back. But what this really shows is that that question is no longer a valid question. That question supposes or presupposes that power still lies with the city council and the city council alone. And what we have proven and what we continue to prove, and what we will continue to prove as we go forward, is that the power lies in the hands of us, the residents. The people who pay property taxes, the people who have invested their lives, their futures, here in Carlsbad. So yes, it's a watershed moment. And those other folks that we have to work with over the next two years until 2018 hits and we can get three more people out, and three more good people in there who listen to people, is we hold the line, we have conversations. They're on notice with this vote. They were on notice with Measure A, and they were also on notice with us getting the vote in the first place. Lightning doesn't strike three times, it's a shift. And so, the answer is, yes, we have compromises when we need to. But those compromises need to be at the will and at the hand of the people. And when the people have the information that they need, the best decisions are made. And that person who sits on the city council, the one or two, that, those two people from this election, will carry the will and the voice of the people onto the city council. And that's the decision that you have to make. Who is going to carry your voice most effectively onto the city council? And I can also tell you that the majority of the work that I've done through my nonprofit has been making change. Making change in a $7 billion international industry, where I was told over and over and over again, "There is nothing that you can do to change this." Women will always be treated less respectfully. They will always be paid less than men. It's surfing, after all. It's a bro culture. There's nothing that you can do to change it. And time after time, also I wanna take into consideration, it's a hyper-controlled bubble, right? So there's no outside influence. It's very much kind of the same situation that we have here, where it's a little bubble. And time after time, I have proven that when you develop a core group of individuals who are empowered to make change, and you yourself are using your voice, that silence is fragile. That power is fragile. It's far more fragile than we think. Because this is where the true power lies. I have changed the surf industry. The surf industry now actually will pay women equally. We have our very first big wave surf contest at Mavericks that we forced upon an organization that calls themselves The Cartel, just to give you an example. They have to have a big wave women's event now at Mavericks because we joined together, we lobbied the Coastal Commission, we went around the group, and we lobbied the Coastal Commission because we understood the process of how we could make, we could force these folks into doing what the people wanted. And we have more events coming up now for women surfers that will allow them to continue professionally. Proven track record of change. So it's not necessarily about forcing, but it is about rising the people up and empowering the residents to be self-advocates and making change. We did it at the Coastal Commission to save the Encina Power Plant. I also wanna let you know that the Encina Power Plant was gonna be decommissioned, torn down, and the city was trying to change the land use on that to visitor commercial. So a group of us from Carlsbad went up and lobbied the Coastal Commission. We didn't ask permission from the city council to do so, and we stopped that land use change. We did that in May. So, we can, and we will make change. It's absolutely possible. And I so look forward to hopefully two of us being able to carry your voices forward to make the future for Carlsbad the way we want it. Well, thank you all for coming, and feel free to ask some more questions individually, but we really appreciate it, and have a good one.
Have a good one.